I'd like to call City Council to meet this order. Today is Tuesday, March 26, 6:00 PM. All members of the press and the public were duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. If you would, please feel free to join me as I say a prayer to be followed by our Fledge of Allegiance and then our roll call. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. The wonderful colors of spring season, with the flowers blooming and the trees sprouting new leaves, displaying the wonderful colors of spring are all but one example of this wonderful world on which we reside. I ask that you look over all who are sick or who have lost loved ones. I ask that you look over and protect our military, who protect us, and others around the world, while at the same time, look over our public safety personnel, who protect us 24/7, 365. Oh Heavenly Father, please look over and protect our residents, our employees, our visitors to our island paradise. I ask you for life itself and for our individual liberties and for our freedom of speech. I pray that all who share this planet learn to respect each other's beliefs, religions, and learn to get along with each other. I ask for your guidance and wisdom tonight in our governing our city and making the wise decisions that affect our residents, our visitors, for not only now, but for generations to come. It is in your holy name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, governed by its individual liberties and its own laws. Our Palm City Clerk, Mr. Marie Copeland, roll call please. Change it on you.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Cannon.
Here.
Councilmember Corwin.
Hola.
Councilmember Roy.
Here.
Councilmember Rice.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Interim Administrator Pedosso.
Here.
Attorney Copeland.
Here.
And I have a request of council, please speak to your microphone.
Hola. Need a seat. Okay. Reading of the Journal of the previous meeting, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And in discussions or corrections?
I have a correction.
Yes ma'am.
On page four at the top, please let the minutes reflect that the delay in the request for the second reading of ordinance 2019-04 was to allow for the city to talk to business owners about the proposed expansion of packaging restrictions. Thank you.
So noted. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
Nanny nays? Ayes have it. Citizens comments. We did have a request for the VFW. Do we have anybody here from the VFW?
Mayor, they have since rescinded their request.
Okay.
They're going back and updating some details.
Okay.
There's some issues with the date and another event, so they will be talking about those internally and then coming back to the city with a revised date.
Thank you very much. Citizens comments, who do we have? Please.
Hello sir.
I got the one.
Introducing myself, Michael with Title Wave Water Sports. Okay. You guys all know me. Alright, so I just wanted, you know, I wasn't able to attend Ways and Means, and I was able to listen, and I just wanted to kind of clear the air on some things, okay? In the fall, I was notified by DEHAC of some violation, some out of compliance, unknowing to me, that was there before we were ever even there. We had been working with them and moving forward. Initially, I asked them, I was like, you know, why are you guys coming to me for this? You know, why is this not on the city? And they repeatedly said, they're like, it's your responsibility, you have to do it because it's your lease, it's your jet skis, it's your jet dock, things like that. So that is why I didn't come forward to the city initially, because I just assumed it was my job, from what OCRM told me. I began working on a manual, I have the whole manual complete, the only thing that I don't have done is the survey, because I removed the jet docks in the wintertime, and we needed a current survey. I then approached Kirby, because I know that ATM has been working with the city, you know, to see if they had a survey from last year that we could use to help speed up the process. I was then notified by, you know, Desiree and I started emailing and talking back and forth, and then recently, I was notified of the 125-foot setback. Now that was never mentioned to me by OCRM, and I didn't know, and again, I didn't know why, because it's not an OCRM requirement. It is only a core requirement. So I don't want anybody to think that I was hiding this. In no way was I, I was totally unaware of this, really until about a week and a half, two weeks ago. So, you know, I've looked at many different drawings from past, from, you know, some have it pushed here, some have it pushed there. I have no idea what that meant, at all. So I want to work with the city moving forward on this, but I just want to make sure that the city works with me too. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes sir. Name and address, please sir.
I'm fighting the impulse to do the Stephen Colbert song. I am Henry Haggerty, 106 Forest Trail. I emailed y'all earlier, as we're dealing with this development on Forest Trail Circle, and the thing I would say is that while this may be a quote-unquote "done deal," it's like, no one's really explained to me, who is the keeper of the laws and the codes? We know that there are codes for .41 acres, but there are codes for flooding, they're as clear as a bell. Maybe they're more subject to interpretation. While I know that the town, the city council has made the planning commission more independent, the guys in the planning commission are great, Doug is a straight shooter, he's always been a straight shooter with me as an individual with any of this, you know, giving that up from people that don't work for me, I elected y'all, but they're great, but they're not someone that I have any say over, it might be good to get a little more of that back under your control, particularly when it comes to, I went to talk to Doug, he was great, he said, well, you know, it's 40% impermeable. This time, this time of year, 2019, with the flooding, the double rainfall, the water table much higher than it used to be, gotta look at that. 40% impermeable going forward is not unwise, it's dangerous. It's dangerous. You know, when I started looking at the essential, you know, what stuff we did with the planning commission, and granted, the builders, they have the right to do what they want, but they were saying, well, these are 2,100 square foot impermeables, but they could be as high as 7,000. So that goes from 10,000 to 35,000 square feet impermeables in an already flooded area. You know, the real step is, he can self-encomber, but if the town council were to take that back or make it an issue the next time elections come, to say, why don't you encumber it? Why don't you encumber it? Why, when, when you got a .4 acre, it shouldn't be above 3,000 square feet. It shouldn't be able to go to seven, because the laws of nature are not allowing it now. Y'all will come here to protect this island, this may be a done deal, but the fact is that it's not a done deal. Because the other part of it is those, if those laws are flooding, have equal value to the laws of zoning, we got a big problem. You know, and I say on the planning commission, and say to y'all, I'm a renter, a lot of y'all know me, but if I were an owner, I'd be launching a class accident lawsuit, because maybe people are afraid of a builder doing it, but I'm not doing it because I'm a renter. But it's like, wait a minute, just to get everyone's attention, not to get all crazy, but it's like, who decides what laws are following, what aren't? Doug has very clear rules, those are his rules, those are his rules, gotta do them just like an officer of the law. But this flooding stuff, that's in your hands. This flooding stuff is in your hands. So I hope you take that as a possible interpretation. Next month, I'm gonna bring you something called Quiet Island, something very different, I've been talking to Jimmy and Sandy about for a while, that's totally unrelated to this, this may be the last time I talk to you about the flooding, but please, this is not getting better. And it's not just the rain, it's the water table. Look in your own backyard and dig down. If you go further than 18 inches without hitting water, well, you're in a lucky place. That ain't me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes sir. This gentleman's rather famous on All-Palm's. And he wrote to All-Palm's.
Good evening, everybody, and I want to thank you for allowing me to be here to speak tonight. I've seen some of you on the beach, I'm known as...
Name and address, please Howard.
Name and address. Name and address.
Oh, my name's Howard Hoag, H-O-G-U-E, and my address is 445 Fetter Bush, that's F-E-T-T-E-R-B-U-S-H Drive, and that's in Monk's Corners, and the zip is 2946, and I'm number one. So, but I, but I am number one, so, but I am known as Beach Santa here, if you've seen me on the beach, I normally wear red, and normally I'm not in red. And I was asked to speak, to come, to speak to you folks tonight about some of the things that I've observed in being on the city of Isle of Palms, the Business District, and on the beach. And this past July, I was asked to start documenting what I pick up, and thank heaven I did, because I tell people, I pick up a lot of stuff, the number, the proofs and the pudding. And in 2018, I've made 34 trips to the beach, where I made 34 observations, and the categories that I'm presenting to you tonight, straws and stirrers picked up 279. Cigarette and cigar, cigar tips and cigarette butts, a total of 5,138. Styrofoam pieces, well, there'd be a big chunk, a styrofoam cooler, little pieces, styrofoam pieces for that, 744. Total items picked up that I've documented in 2018 are 10,283 documented pieces. In 2019, the start of this year, I have made 24 trips to Isle of Palms, doing the Business District, and what I do is, when I go to the beach, I go from the Windjammer area with the volleyball courts, up to 21st, and that's my walk. So in 2019, I picked up straws and stirrers only 426. Cigarette butts, 5,523. 76 pieces of styrofoam, and a total number of items, 11,138. The total, grand total, thank you. The grand total for straws and stirrers, 705. Cigarette butts, 10,661. Styrofoam, 820. And a grand total of items picked up, 21,421. And you know, the one thing is, when I'm doing this, I enjoy making the place better than what I founded. And I set the example for people, I get a lot of interaction, and before I forget, I did want to bring something, show and tell. This is what about 2,000 cigarette butts look like. And those 2,000 cigarette butts, if they get into the water system, it's not good. It's, it's simple as that. But I have been participating in the beach sweeps, Monday night through the summer, and we do it monthly during the off-season, and my partner in crime, Linda Rowe, from the volunteer from the South Carolina Aquarium, we come down here at least once a week, maybe twice a week during the off-season, to do the sweep, and I, we call it the beach sweep, but I call it the Isle of Palm sweep, because like, you know, my thinking, if I park my car, I'm not gonna walk over trash to get to the beach. So if I see a cigarette butt on Ocean Boulevard, or one of the parking areas, walking to the beach, I'm gonna pick it up. I want the place looking clean. Clean looks nice. And, so, we're starting the 2019 season, so I hope when you folks consider everything you're considering tonight, that you make the right decisions to ban certain things. I would hope that you would do that, to keep it out of the ecosystem, to preserve the sea life, preserve the animals, the seabirds, and everything that's affected by it. Any questions or thoughts? Would you like me to leave the data with you?
I sure agree you would.
And Howard, I want to give you a big clap.
Thank you. Thank you.
Howard, I think that's the first time we had a speaker who...
I'm sorry, no.
It's the first time we had a resident who got a standing ovation. Thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Do we have anybody else? Citizens comments?
Yes sir.
My name is Howard George, I'm with the South Carolina Aquarium. I'm the four-man version of Kelly Thogerson, so, yeah, like Kelly, Kelly would normally be here tonight, but Kelly is actually on spring break with her beautiful daughter, so I told her I would pinch in for her. But, long story short, is I, I'm not gonna be long, I'm just gonna reiterate what was just communicated. Basically, as of last summer, we had an honor and pleasure partnering with Isle of Palms for 11 one-hour sweeps that was held here, and definitely, you're very familiar, I see Susan nodding here, because she was actually one of the spearhead behind that effort. But basically, in 11 one-hour sweeps, we just had, the aggregate amount of marine aqua debris that was actually collected was over 23,000 pieces. And basically, it breaks down simply, roughly about 10,240 pieces of that 23,000 was plastics. And when you think about the other numbers, in terms of styrofoam, about 809 was styrofoam, and when you think about sort of those other things like straws, a huge percentage of this was actually the straws, and things of that nature. And the only thing I just want to communicate simply, first and foremost, I just want to say, it's great to be back where it all started, in the place where you guys were the first to make the stand. So I just want to say thank you, because it was here that it all started. And secondly, I want to say thank you to Mayor Jimmy Carroll for how you represented us so proudly in the Low Country and Columbia, we thank you for that. But most importantly, as we continue to think about how do we can further strengthen our resolve to protect nature, just keep in mind that these numbers are daunting, considering that just from 11 hours of cleanup, over 23 pieces of marine aquatic debris was collected. And when you put that in sort of frame of reference, when you think about the Isle of Palms population, which as of 2017 was 4,363 people, that's over five pieces of trash per person, in just 11 hours. So, just wanted to reiterate that and say thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Katrina.
I'll be right back.
You don't have to be quick, you've earned this right.
Y'all have places to go. I'm wearing heels. My name is Katrina Limbach, I'm a resident on the island, I live at 5 Duck Lane, I own the Isle of Palms Beach Share Company with a couple of my partners, and I have an invested interest in the beach. I'm also a co-founder of the Isle of Palms Cleanup Crew, and I know y'all probably have a background history, but we started this grassroots organization last summer, and we have had such an awesome turnout, and have discovered so many things. Personally, I've learned so much about plastics and my personal use of them, I mean, I used to go through 12 water bottles in two days, easily, two summers ago. And my whole life has changed just based on this education, and it really came to light with these ordinances y'all have put into place. I'm not gonna bore you with the data, but I do want to pass these out. Take one and pass one. I know that our friend from the aquarium, and also Howard, talked a lot about how much we've picked up, but percentage-wise, the plastics and the cigarettes really take the bulk of what we pick up. The 9,400 plastics that we picked up account for nearly 41% of the total amount of trash that we've picked up, in just this tiny little sample of 11 hours over the summer. The cigarettes also really have a statement in and of themselves, I don't want to say too much more about them, but being close to 39% of the total amount that we pick up is a really, really strong number. They're actually the most littered item in the entire world, and they take up to 10 years to decompose, so I do want that to be noted with y'all. I think Isle of Palms, like he said, has been awesome and leading, and being the pathfinder for these types of changes, and I don't think we want to fall behind, so I just urge you guys to consider all this data and all the changes that are happening in the world. So, thank you.
Do you have an extra one of these? You two get a hand.
We've got one, we just found it.
Okay, anyone else from, thank you Howard, anyone else? Going once, twice, three times, alright, moving on. Standing committee reports, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mayor. Regular meeting of the Ways and Means Committee was held at 5 o'clock Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, in council chambers, City Hall, all council members were in attendance, as was the Administrator, Treasurer, Attorney, and Clerk Copeland. We called the meeting to order, and I was at the press and public, we duly notified the meeting to order the Freedom of Information Act. We approved the previous meeting's minutes. New business was, we suspended the rules of order a couple of times, because people had scheduling conflicts, and then we immediately took up new business item F, discussion of a request from a resident at 2600 Palm Boulevard to construct a public boardwalk and to agree to future maintenance. Interim Administrator Pedosso just stated that resident funded heat learning costs of such an endeavor has changed the mind of the throne of the request. Then we moved to suspend the rules of order to address item G, and that is approval of a change order from Applied Technology Management ATM to preserve necessary permits on behalf of the city to ensure that existing tidal wave dock is compliant and in, with regulatory requirements. The chair invited Kirby Marshall, representative of ATM, to come forward and explain this matter to the committee and to answer any questions they might have. This is quite lengthy discussion, but I think there are a couple of things, there are on, there's three full pages of the Ways and Means Committee, but a couple of things I think do need to be noted here in public. The Administrator explained to the committee that the city recently learned that the tidal wave dock was out of compliance with the most recent DEHAC permit issued in 1995. She stated that the city has two options, one, to submit an application under the city of Isle of Palms, asking for the existing structure to be permitted, or two, to make the necessary modifications to make the structure compliant with the 1995 permit as recommended by SC DHPC, DEHAC. Mr. Marshall stated currently ATM was under contract with the city to permit IOP Marina docks for the dock rehabilitation project. When they were preparing the permit application documents, they were contacted by Title Wave Water Sports and told that DEHAC identified several areas of non-compliance related to the 95 permit. The procedures for bringing this dock into compliance is relatively straightforward. It requires separate permit application similar to the permit for the rehabilitation dock, a project in its own operations and maintenance manual. Mr. Marshall noted that Title Wave has an operations and maintenance manual that needs update relative to their operating procedures. When the real property committee met last week, they recommended the city move forward with two permits, one to bring Title Wave and the dock structure into compliance, and two, to allow the rest of the dock rehabilitation to occur. If in the future, the city decided to turn the Title Wave dock into a community dock, or allow for a different use, the permit could easily be modified. Some more detail, the city's been told that any permit that will take from 90 to 120 days, therefore, no permits would likely be approved before September. The city then has a non-compliant dock and must tell the tenant Title Wave they must operate within the limits of the 1995 permit. Basically, the committee agreed to defer any decision-making until after executive session later in the meeting, that meeting, and the mayor, and Councilmember Bell withdrew their motion and seconded respectively. Mr. Marshall stated that permitting process for the dock would be like the process for the rest of Marina, it would be a joint permitting process with DEHAC, OCRM, and Corps of Engineers, and will go out for public comment for each agency. The variance requests will be a part and partial of standard permitting process. So, the next one was citizens' comments from Matt and Cindy Miantanio, were the residents of 210 Forest Trail. He stated that they had been working toward acquiring flood mitigation grants since 2016, or notified in December 2018, they would receive the award. They were to present any, they were there, present to answer any questions that might have arise. We'll deal with that a little bit later on in this report. Financial reports. Treasurer Suggs reported that collections through the end of February 2019 in general fund was in excess of $7 million of a $10 million annual budget. Based on trends, she indicated the city might end the year $500,000 ahead of budget. Expenditures were 57% of budget, against a target of 67% all departments were at or below, except mayor and council due to a timing issue. She commented the capital project fund had been significantly less, had significantly less activity than was anticipated by the budget. Projects that have been done were drainage phase two, the underground storage tanks, garbage truck, renovations of public work structure, the gym floor and Edie's ditch cleanup. Projects not done this year will be allocated to fiscal year '20. She stated that a forecasted year-end positive net result in general fund will be $862,000, which will be rolled into capital projects, fund for fiscal year '20, until council makes its final decision on its disposition. Cash balance end of February is probably approximately $18 million, $500,000 with approximately $17 million, $500,000 into LGIP. Business license and permit revenues continued out from budget, and with the forecasted revenue from Wild Dune, revenues in these funds were projected to exceed budget by $470,000. Treasurer noted that today the fire department was in budget for expenditures, that situations that generated the excess overtime, military leave, light duty, and FMLA leave have ended sort of over budget, overtime should have ended. She reminded the committee that $940,000 was in the fiscal year budget for repairs of public safety building, but only half of the amount was expected to be spent this year, the year ending 6/30/19, so the forecast will be adjusted. The projects that will carry over to fiscal year '20 are public safety building rehabilitation, phase one drainage, and the ladder truck. Pile trucks were permitted. Tourism revenue data was presented in a new format, it not contained comparisons of all the sources that showed on page one, the yearly comparison by fund, or at the bottom of the page. Don't think that, phase two drainage project was winding down February, expenditures were for just some small invoices from civil site environmental. The key expenditure on the underground stage tank projected Marina was, was for pay, application number five, the budget remaining for this project was $83,671. And, based upon my notes and meeting with Debbie and Desiree, I think the only thing left to do, Mayor, is take up the action items, change orders, and other things that are listed.
Because I'm gonna have to recuse myself from the first one, I'm gonna ask you to make the motion on that, sir.
Okay, yes sir. So Ways and Means, A, item one, is there a motion to approve, approval of a change order from Thomas and Hutton, in the amount of, not to exceed $7,500 for the surveying, engineering, and design for drainage improvement on Tabby Lane?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Little bit. Because I live on Tabby Lane, I have to recuse myself from that vote.
What you doing with that one?
I've been there for a while.
Okay, any other discussion?
Question, do we have a priority listing of drainage projects? And if so, where does this come up on that?
I'll, I'll take Republic Works. We're just doing the...
left to do, Mayor, is take up the action items, the change orders, and other things that are listed.
Because I'm going to have to recuse myself from the first one, I'm going to ask you to make the motion on that.
Okay, yes, sir. So Ways and Means, A, Item One. Is there a motion to approve, approval of a change order from Thomas and Hutton in the amount of not to exceed $7,500 for the surveying, engineering, and design for drainage improvement on Tabby Lane?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Little bit. Because I live on Tabby Lane, I have to recuse myself from that vote.
What you doing with that one?
I've been there for a while.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Question, do we have a priority listing of drainage projects? And if so, where does this come up on that?
I'll take Republic Works. We're just doing the engineering. The residents of Tabby Lane are actually paying for this project, so we are strictly paying for the engineering of this. And this is something that is in dire need.
But to the question, do, have we prioritized throughout the city sites that we should be looking at?
We do have an internal, an internal priority list of drainage issues. One of the things that is included in your agenda for approval is a change order for Thomas and Hutton to help us identify larger projects that need to be prioritized that will be connected to phase three outfalls. But yes, we do have a priority list of projects that need, that need attention, and we worked with SEDOT with that list when they came over earlier this month to complete some, some of those projects. But we do, Tabby Lane is one of the locations that constantly present issues associated with flooding. The, the repair for that area has been recommended in the past. This is something that we have talked about for over a year. This time, the residents came forward and said that they're willing to pay for the construction. So I thought that the, that the city had funds in their drainage contingency fund to cooperate and partner with them in that approach, and the city would be covering the cost of the design. We did get two proposals for the design and the engineering, and Thomas and Hutton was the lowest. And that is why it's been recommended for approval.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion, questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? None against? It passes unanimously. Ms. Mayor?
Thank you very much, sir. Number two, award of a contract to Edie's in the amount to not to exceed $30,000 for emergency repairs to marginal road, marginal road is off of 41st Avenue on the side there, and the drainpipe itself is crushed in.
Make that as a motion?
So I'd like to make that as a motion.
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion. Do we hear any discussion on this? Yes, ma'am.
So I know we are still also waiting to hear if the county will help us with this. This is if the county is not willing to help in, in repairing this problem, then we have the funds in the contingency, drainage contingency.
That is correct. We have approached the county, however, due to their work schedule, it would take several months before they could come in, and we think that this is something that needs attention as soon as possible. Edie's is on the island, they're working with the IOP Water and Sewer Commission and their water line replacement project. They just worked for a phase three, phase two drainage. So you all would be approving an amount not to exceed. We'll still get some clarification from the county and try to compare those schedules and go with the, I guess, the focus one that could deploy.
And this is where the road is actually caving in because of this.
Correct, because the pipe has been separated and all the soil is seeping in, so there's no, there's no true drainage there towards the 41st Avenue outfall.
Jimmy, quick question?
Yes, please.
Just out of curiosity, if we approve this, does that diminish the chances of the county participating?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous, 9-0. Acceptance of award for flood mitigation grant through SCDNR in amount of $294,244.20 to elevate 210 Forest Trail.
Let's move that as a motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
This is what we were talking about before, I'm sure you've expanded.
Well, I tell you, I mean, this is something that the D'Antonios have had, I think, four FEMA claims, and have worked very hard to get this done. It's not going to cost the city anything, we just, it's a pass-through kind of grant. But again, this is something that...
Jimmy?
Yes, sir.
It's just worth noting, for those in the audience, that this is a FEMA program that I don't think any of us were aware of. I know Matt D'Antonio pursued it vigorously, but to the Mayor's comment, it's a, it's a pass-through, so it flows through the city's books with reimbursement and, and the deal itself with the residents. It's something that with other, and, and you can certainly help with this, severe flooding, when, when something is deemed severe enough where you've had multiple instances, the monies are available federally. We're doing nothing more than administering and making sure that the resident's protected in the process.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous, 9-0. Award for contract Ramond Painting and Repairs LLC in amount of $73,104.25 to pressure wash, caulk, and paint Isle of Palms Fire Station Number Two. I make that as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussions?
Just, just some clarification. When you look at the, the bid page that we were given...
Yes, ma'am.
When you look at the two bids, there, there are two questions that I have. In the one bid, the repair and placement of rusted ductwork in the Bay Area was priced at $15,950. The second bid, the repair, the same thing, is $3,432. That to me is, are we sure we're looking at apples and apples? Is there something in that $15,950 that has to be done and we're going to see a change order coming from the low bidder because they didn't see the same thing that the other side? It's just such a difference in that pricing. I just wondered if staff had looked into that.
We have. Both of the bidders came together for the walkthrough with Chief Graham, and Chief Graham has had conversations with them to ensure that they understand what the scope of the project is. I think this is just a matter of somebody, underbidding other, somebody else to get, to get some work.
But we're not going to see a change order a month later saying, oh, $3,000 isn't going to cover it, we need 15?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure, it's such a difference. I mean, it just kind of throws a...
Chief Graham, do we'd like to make a comment on this?
I'm sure Chief has covered it, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I have to double check after the question.
Triple checks, I know her.
I do, too.
So after seeing the huge difference, I actually, we had a picture today, so you can see how simple this project actually is. This is some ductwork that's actually in an exposed area in the bay where the bunker gear is kept. And so there's some salt air that gets to it, but it's really a very simple, I don't know where the $15,000 came from.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if there was two different scopes of things that they were looking at, because that's a big difference.
No.
Okay, right. The only other question is that you're asking for $73,000, which is the base price plus Alt 1 and Alt 2. Is there a reason why you didn't include Alt 3 at $4,475 that's replaced rusted railing on rooftop?
The reason I did not go with the railing is because there were no specifications, and I'm afraid that with no specifications, I'm not sure what they're going to put in. And it seemed like a relatively simple job that we could take care of ourselves.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that it was actually not doing something that was listed rather than just not adding up correctly.
I left that out intentionally because we're not sure what they intend to put in. And I believe that with that cost, we can either get a better cost or do it ourselves.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, 9-0. Number five, approval of change order to dislocate work for phase three drainage improvements from Thomas and Hutton in the amount of $23,300. This goes back to one of our comments from our citizens. We are working on phase three. We do have some, three outfalls that we are working on. So I make that as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. King, you have anything you want, you'd ask for?
No.
Okay. Anyone else?
I will discuss if I do.
Okay, hearing no other discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? 9-0, unanimous. Number six, approval of a change order from Applied Technology Management ATM to pursue the necessary permits on behalf of the city to ensure that the existing tidal wave dock is compliant with the regulatory requirements. I make that as a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, please. Miss, you want to take me first?
Yes, sir.
All right. Whenever there are multiple parties involved in anything, much less federal and state regulatory agencies, you get a lot of mixed stories and, and information. So I would ask, have we met with, sponsored a meeting with all the parties? That includes the tenants, OCRM, the Corps, and the city. Has such a meeting been held?
Not with everybody involved, but I have had conversations or meetings with each of the ones that you have listed.
Well, if not, and given what we heard earlier and other information that we discussed last week, I would think it would be prudent that you have a joint face-to-face meeting before we go forward and approve number six. Thank you.
Mr. Moy. I just had a question. Does this change order doesn't specify an amount? Have they given any estimate, has ATM given us any estimates?
Yes, $6,500.
Okay. Okay. Any other?
Just, just one comment. I think this says Title Wave, just so everyone's clear, it's the permitting for the Marina as well, right? So it was the belief and the recommendation from the city and Kirby Marshall that all the permitting for the Marina be brought through the city, not the independent leases, whatever the varying terms are. So, you know, frankly, it's surprising that the permitting has been with the individual businesses, given the duration of those leases instead of through the city to begin with.
That's a good point, but if something was done years and years ago.
Yeah, and it's, it's, there's, I don't think there's egregious behavior on the part of Title Wave or anybody else on this.
Absolutely not.
I think it's just, it's an issue of where do you want the permitting to reside?
Mr., yes, one more comment.
That's all right. Then does the language in this motion need to be changed rather than just Title Wave to...
This is in addition to...
Jimmy, if I may?
Yes.
I mean, because the permitting that Kirby is referring to is Title Wave, right? The city is already working on the balance of permitting under the dock restoration and rehabilitation, if you will.
Addition to the order.
If you look to the motion, see, it says on behalf of the city, just specific wording.
Mr. Moy, thank you. Just a quick reaction to Councilmember Kinghorn's suggestion. I think it's a wise decision. The only reason I, I think we have an issue is just the timing of trying to get those bodies together in, in a single room in the permit application time. So I think that we have to trust in the experts, the ATM, who, this is what they do for a living, as well as in our, our city staff, to make sure that we're navigating and, and keeping everybody in the loop.
But I, I think we would all agree that it's best that we take the time to do it right, make sure everybody's on the same page.
All right.
Before we go forward and rush something.
Absolutely.
So with that...
That's what we got.
I just want to say, we, we are coordinating, we...
Professional.
We have a couple of days that we have provided to DEHAC and OCRM and the Army Corps. Kirby is handling that coordination with everybody's schedules. This is to pursue with the city applying for this permit to ensure that the existing structure is compliant and make sure that the permit is under the city's name. This is, has nothing to do with the overall dock rehabilitation project that we also have already contracted with ATM. So the, the additional is because we have an additional step to take to ensure that this structure is under the city's name, and that's been the recommendation.
I, I appreciate that, and we certainly don't want to slow down the full permitting process. So with that, I'd like to offer an amendment that before we go forward with the Title Wave permit, that a meeting be held, because one thing to have a dialogue and communication separately, it's another thing to get in the room with everybody that's a stakeholder and come out of it with a plan.
Do we have a second to his amendment? Hearing none, that second amendment fails. Okay, going back to the...
I just want to say for the record, and I know that Michael is here, we are assuming that we're going to work with Michael and Title Wave Waters Force to ensure that the permitting for this dock happens and, and to ensure that they have, you know, a, a compliant dock to go through the rest of their lease. So we are operating out of the assumption that we're going to be working together, everybody, all the parties involved, to ensure that this happens and this happens as quickly as possible.
So back to the original motion of $6,500 for the additional ATM costs. No other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Eight, one. Okay, moving on. Public Safety Committee, permit.
The Public Safety Committee met on Monday, March 4th at 9:00 a.m. All committee members were present. We had some citizens' comments. Captain Anna Herndon, representing the 4th Air, Air Lift Squadron, come and spoke and wanted to try to have a beach run. Obviously, I think it's, it's on hold right now.
Correct.
So we will look forward to seeing them come forward again. We also had another citizen come and talk about parking that we've had up north of 41st Avenue, and Jim Rye came and spoke to the committee as well. Under old business, we had an update on implement, implementing a paver park system on Palm Boulevard. The Assistant Administrator and myself met with engineers from TrueGrid and a permeable paver system to stabilize the road shoulder and to delineate parking. TrueGrid offered to install a product in a location in the city for a test, and we agreed that the test area should be done that was, that was constantly, consistently used, and we're working on that location right now. Update on our public transit initiative. The Assistant Administrator is working with the COG and CHAT to have vans basically donated to the city, or purchased, and, and will actually shuttle staff back and forth from Mount Pleasant into, onto the island. We had an update on the waterway multi-use path. Since the city has been successful in securing funds from CTC and the TST funding, the interim administrator recommended the city submit for improvements for the waterway multi-use path as a priority project. As you know, we're already working forward that with the engineers in Charleston County. We had a discussion of coyote management. On Friday, March 1st, nine traps were removed from their locations to be properly cleaned for redeployment, and another coyote was trapped, making it a total of three for 2019. And the city has received its depredation permit for the island trapper to operate under the city's permit in the months of February. In the months of February, only four sightings were reported. I had spoke with a professor out of the Forestry and Wildlife Chair for Ori Georgetown Technical College, Jim Westerholt, and he's offered his assistance in trying to rein in our coyote population. We had discussion of beach handicap accessibility. Interim Chief Ustrey referred to state law, she cited, cited at the February meeting, saying that the city must provide access, and the city has the means to do it. So basically allowing access to the beach for handicap accessibles, handicap people. And their access to it can be with a cart or wheelchair, and that cart can be defined as a golf cart as well. We did have a status of engaging a law enforcement consultant to conduct an independent assessment of the management operations of the police department, and that is, we have reached out to individuals in municipal association and former chiefs for their input. Our next meeting date is 9:00 a.m., Monday, April 1st, in the conference room, if anybody has any other questions.
Hearing any questions?
I, I do. So where are we exactly on disabled people being able to take golf carts? What is it?
It's a little...
It's not a coyote, is it?
It's the insurance one.
I was afraid it was going to jump.
Oh, that's fine. With the...
With golf carts on the beach?
Yes. We, at our, at our next meeting, Monday, April 1st, we will finalize all that information and have everything in place for it. So it is probably more, it's going to have to be, like I said, the city cannot limit access to the beach. People can go, per state law, people can go down on the beach via cart, and we're trying to determine, in our city code, we have cart listed as an automobile, and we don't allow automobiles. State law supersedes that. So you can, a cart is a golf cart, and you can drive...
It's a tweak.
Yeah, you can have it on, you can have it on the beach. So we're going to go through and make those changes where we need to in our next committee meeting, and we'll be able to have access, full access to the beach.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, moving on. Public Works.
That's me. Public Works Committee met Thursday, March 7th. Councilmember Kinghorn was out of town. All other appropriate members and staff were present. The minutes of the previous meeting were approved. First order of business was to recognize Bernard Gordine, who retired Friday, March 22nd, this past Friday, after 18 years of outstanding professional service to our island, and we hit... Garbage levels are down, but yard debris is relatively flat. He has been involved with the underground storage tank installation at the Marina. There was a breach in the stormwater pipe. The issue was corrected and repaired. That project is moving along. Front beach parking lots were prepared for the season, so those are up and ready to accept our visitors. The flatbed pickup had significant repairs that will extend the life of the truck for five or six years, and now the Public Works fleet is ready to go for the visitor season. Public Works Building is currently getting a long overdue makeover, and it is wonderful to see, and will make a huge difference for the department. If you get a chance, y'all, please go walk through. It's gutted, getting painted, new floor. It is such a wonderful thing to see, so overdue. Phase two drainage is just about complete, and this is something we should all really celebrate. A successful drainage project, seven years in the making. Only the punchless items remain, as well as some paperwork. Isle of Palms Water and Sewer is doing some work in that area, so if you see crews in the area of Forty-fourth to Fifty-seventh, it is Water and Sewer work now also being done. So it's a lot going on down there, but all good stuff and great progress, keeping it flowing. Moving on to ditches and drainage. Another positive update is the ditch at Thirty-two Thirty-second, that's a hard one to say, is complete, and everyone involved in this long-awaited remedy is very, very pleased. And this has also been many years in the making. So the county came in and fixed a ditch, so that's great.
Carol, is that Burgh House?
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't that great news? I know, right? It's like, it's done, complete. SCDOT was on the island in March. They worked on nine small drainage projects on the island that the city identified, and they will return in June, September, and in December, each time with seven or eight crew to work on drainage issues. So we're really happy about that. They're stepping up. EDIS continues to work on cleaning out the ditches per their contract with the city. We discussed and approved the contract with Thomas &amp; Hutton for the flap gate on Tabby Lane, so that's a great progress. We discussed the need of repairs of pipes and marginal road, where, and that just is such a critical area, because we all know Forty-first, I mean, you can literally kayak down there when it's king tides, and we've got to get that fixed. So thank you for approving that. We discussed the ordinance, amending Title IV, Public Works, Chapter IV, Single Use Plastic Bags. We voted to expand the exemptions in the ordinance to include plastic drink lids and condiment packaging to be consistent with our surrounding communities. We continue to make strides to be good stewards of our environment, and the committee believes consistency will make community awareness and education easier. However, we will all encourage reusable cups, et cetera, wherever possible. And this is something I think collectively, we all really need to do. Just because we're allowing some exemptions, we shouldn't start getting sloppy. We all really need to continue, you know, to push, especially kids, to get used to just reusable drink and water containers. And I know, I think we're putting in a water fountain at Front Beach, which is great, so people can refill their reusable containers. We had a request from Forty-eighth Avenue LLC to tie into the city's drainage system, and we unanimously passed a request for that tie-in to our drainage system. The system was designed to handle the additional capacity, and the residents of Forty-eighth will be responsible for maintaining the system. We will likely receive a request from the Siddle Beach House to tie into the system, and again, the engineering was designed anticipating these additions. I guess I should make a motion to...
I'll make the motion to prove that.
Hold a second.
Okay, and Forty-eighth just is a private street, so this is something that they will be responsible for.
Engineering, installation, and maintenance.
And maintenance, yes. So I guess you've called the...
Any other discussion on that? We have a motion and a second. Hearing done. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous?
And then, last thing is tree trimming schedule. Dominion Energy will be trimming the trees in preparation for hurricane season. The trimming is projected to take two months, and the city will meet with them beforehand, and we will hold a public meeting. Their task is to remove limbs that are near power lines. We do not have a timeframe yet, but that is coming down the pike, so I guess we just all need to be aware of that. Our next meeting is Thursday, April 4th at 9:00 a.m. This ends my report.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
A comment. I thank the Public Works Committee Chair. I think the city should redouble its efforts on litter education programs, and with regards to Front Beach, have a robust pack-in, pack-out policy, so it becomes the norm when people go with a cooler, or beverages, or unfortunately, cigarette butts, that it's normal to pack in and pack out. They have these programs, and it's commonplace in state and federal parts. It should be the same in our community. But we can take the lead and redouble our efforts. We've talked about it in the past, and I think we can do more, especially getting people to take things in and out of the beach.
Leave your footprints. Back.
Yes, sir.
I just second what he's saying. I mean, we heard very strongly about cigarettes being an issue, and, you know, I think it's an emotional issue about smoking or not smoking. It should not be an emotional issue about picking up your litter. This is something that, you know, I've never smoked, so I can't, you know, I'll be the nonsmoker up here, probably most of us are nonsmokers, but I don't think they think about it. I think it's just happenstance, right? Let's do something to cause people to think about it and have them understand that we treated it seriously. And frankly, publicizing, there is a member of the press in the audience, publicizing how much cigarette butts we're picking up. I mean, it's ludicrous to hear this. He's writing vigorously right now, which is a really good thing. Thank you.
I a hundred percent agree, and I think we should, I mean, as a Public Works Committee, I guess, and I guess I'm not exactly sure how to go about, you know, we certainly don't want to hand out something.
Plastic.
Right. And I, I mean, signs, you know, that's a whole nother sensitive issue, so it's, we've got to figure out how to get to people.
One quick remark. I want to thank Director Pitts for throwing a nice going-away party for Bernard. Barbecue chicken on the grill, that was delicious. Good job. Any other?
Yeah, I'll just, you know, chime in with everybody. We just have to get the message out that the ocean and the beach cannot continue to be our trash can. And as a barrier island, I'm so thankful that we've been leaders in this and that we're continuing to lead on this issue. By the year 2050, World Economic Forum study says that there'll be more plastic in the ocean than fish if we continue at this rate, which, so we've got to be the ones that make and lead for change, so.
And if I may add, in terms of Carol, wear, social media, of course, but I would think all the businesses in Front Beach would support our signage and other notices they could make, and of course, our restrooms and showers. A lot of those people are going there. Right in their face is pack-in, pack-out.
Sorry, I wasn't going to talk, but this is a perfect example of a potential task force or ad huxess in committee, where we know we have some citizens that are doing great stuff already. Let's figure out a way to empower them and bring them into the fold, because we all want the same thing.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on.
Was there, can I just get an update on the Marina, the underground storage? What's the schedule for that?
The last update that I received was supposed to be completed in the next two weeks, way before Easter weekend.
I got to not look at John.
So the Recreation Committee met at 5:00 p.m. Monday, March 4th, at City Hall, with all members present, as well as our interim administrator, our recreation director, and city clerk. In his first meeting as chair of the Recreation Department, John Moy quickly resigned, due to the fact that he will now be chairing the Personnel Committee. Once the dust settled, I was elected chair, and Councilmember Buchanan was elected vice chair. We heard from Jim Rye and citizens' comments. He gave input on our farmer's market and praised the rec department for its maintenance of facilities. Highlights from our Recreation Director, Norma Jean Page's report include the well-received acting performance workshop for youngsters, social groups for adults that are meeting at the rec center, like gather, knit, and stitch, and wood carving, and the new class Spanish travel and leisure has been very popular. At the time of our meeting, the rec staff was gearing up for Front Beach Fest, which was held Saturday, March 9th. I think I saw a lot of you guys there. It seemed to go off without a hitch and was lots of fun. Upcoming events include, this is not in your minutes, but I happen to know there's a spring break activity for kids tomorrow afternoon, which is dodgeball and a movie, just for ages five to 12. The annual Isle of Palms Yard Sale is this Saturday morning. Our Easter egg hunt is April 20th. Music in the Park will be on May 4th, and that will coincide with summer camp registration kickoff for island residents. That is going to be held for the first time on a Saturday, and we hope that that will be more user-friendly for parents and also draw a crowd to the festival, so a win-win. We had a lengthy discussion of rental possibilities of rec center fields and courts, and considered the challenges of determining when facilities like soccer fields could be made available, and whether that could adversely impact the ability of residents to use them. We also considered the likely demands we might see from for-profit travel teams, and ultimately, we agreed to support a practice of allowing school teams with island residents involved to reserve the fields at no cost, rather than renting out facilities. We also discussed ways that we might encourage residents to visit the rec center more, and learned that our interim administrator is looking at partnering with the Exchange Club for possible use of its facility. Staff is also looking into ways we can give participants at the rec center more freedom to take a variety of exercise classes and still receive a discounted rate, instead of being locked into one particular class. Our interim administrator explained plans for moving forward with a request for proposals for a surfing franchise in Wild Dunes. I believe we've had some complications that have come up since then, and I expect that we'll be addressing that in our next meeting. In new business, we discussed a plan to downsize the farmer's market for fall 2019 and move its location to the rec center, when it has been at Charleston County Park the past two years. This might also result in a change in the day of the week that the farmer's market will be offered. This plan was requested by our two market managers, who are also island residents and who were involved in the group who introduced the market to the island, and the move is supported by our city staff and interim administrator. Our next meeting will be 5:00 p.m. Monday, April 1st.
Great report. Any questions?
Question. The tennis courts are undergoing resurfacing right now. Are we lining them for pickleball as well? Excellent. I think every other jurisdiction has pickleball. As most of you know, it's become very popular, particularly for Carol. And I understand that Wild Dunes has added pickleball courts. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moy.
I'm just really glad hearing the farmer's market is moving. I've heard numerous complaints over the past two years, it's just too hot where it was, and people would go once. I think they're making a valiant effort. I'm just really, really glad that the staff at the rec department is agreed to have it there. I think you're going to see a lot more activity.
I think with the knowledge that it will be downsized makes it doable. The concern, the size of it that we had at the scale previously, did not make it conducive to doing it at the rec center. So this will be a few tweaks that we'll be making.
Good, that's a really good job.
Just one quick comment. I just wanted to ask Susan what time tomorrow I should drop my grandkids off.
Noon. I believe it's noon to three.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, personnel did not meet, but I think the chair would like to say a couple things.
I would, yeah. First time as a chair, and I went ahead and canceled the meeting, so really good start. And we have, we have a lot of stuff going on, though, so I wanted to provide some updates. And I'm going to make up for that missed meeting. I've already got, I've met with the mayor and the interim administrator to schedule two executive sessions for the first week of April, on top of our Personnel Committee meeting. So we're going to, we're going to make up for that missed March meeting real quick. So the big outstanding items that we have are the hiring processes for the city administrator and for the chief of police. There's a lot of other outstanding items. We'll address those in our next Personnel meeting, but I wanted to address the status of those two hiring searches, because I know that's on the top of everyone's mind. I'll start with the chief of police. That's the process that we wanted to expedite first right now, and I'm sorry, I'm going to back up a little bit and provide full context for everyone, so that we're all on the same page. Most of you, everyone at council, is aware that we took over the hiring process from the Mercer Group. We felt that our internal staff and our council would be able to handle the process with greater efficiency and efficacy, and so we've taken over that process from them. We've closed out that deal. They provided all of the materials and all of the resumes to us, so that we could take that on. Unfortunately, we, the reason we canceled that meeting is that the materials that they provided to us were inadequate for us to move to the next stage, and so our staff had to take on the process of doing additional vetting of those initial applicants to the chief of police position. Our staff has used a combination of scanning resumes and pre-employment assessment to, and some online digging and researching of these candidates, to whittle that list down to fifteen, which I think has since been dropped to twelve. Additional phone screening is underway now. I think as of now, all candidates have actually undergone an additional layer of phone screening interviews, and that information and data will be provided to full council shortly. Our executive session on the 2nd of April, which is next Tuesday, will entail a full discussion with council as to where we see the strongest candidates. The hope of that executive session is that there's guidance provided to personnel as to the top three or five candidates. The reason that that session is conducted in executive session rather than open session is to protect the identity of all of those candidates who have applied for the position. A lot of, most of these folks are currently employed, and they don't want their employers to necessarily know that they're out looking for jobs, because that would put their job at jeopardy. So that's why we conduct that discussion in executive session. The timetable that was provided last month, we're still on schedule. We hope to have folks, by next week, the finalists identified, and invitations for them to come on site to interview. That would be two weeks from the 2nd week of April, so mid-April, we're looking to conduct those interviews on site. City staff is providing structured interviews that will give any participants in that process a very guided, objective way for evaluating whether someone's going to be a good fit for the role. That's where we stand on chief of police. Before I give an update on city administrator, I think it would be good to see if there's any questions about where we are and the next steps on that.
I'm really glad you're getting them in before the mosquitoes get bad. They might not want to come.
Just one, one quick question. You said the list was now to twelve. I'd ask that you, you know, reach out to council. We had some concerns about two, but no idea about where that other one came from.
Just happened.
Okay, thank you.
John, have you gone, and you may not have had time, but have you or the committee previously gone to any other local jurisdictions that have, in the last, say, eighteen months, sought to fill such a position and get, say, their last five resumes or those that they were considering?
I don't think that we did that. We relied on... We relied on the recruiter for the sourcing of the position, as well as the posting. I think that might have been a nice step at the upfront, but where we're at now, we're...
If you need more resumes, you might consider that. If you need any help with municipal association, let me know. And for the administrator position and the deputy, where you have time, you might want to...
Sure. And unless there's questions, that's maybe a good segue into the administrator, but...
Mr. Chairman, if I'm not mistaken, the municipal association was contacted, as was the Association of Police Chiefs, so it's really been put out there.
I'm trying to be more specific. For instance, if Sullivan's Island hired a police chief or a deputy for public works in the last 18 months, they have three or four finalists, they were probably acceptable to them. You would wanna narrow it down and get those resumes, I would think. And I'm sure they'd be more than happy to provide them.
It's a great, great idea. Any other questions on chief of police? Okay. So, the city administrator position, we should be, I'm gonna look to Winnett right here. We should be sending out invitations for the pre-employment assessment for all of the applications that we received. Those have not been sent out yet. Tomorrow? Hopefully tomorrow, we'll be sending out the pre-employment assessment screening for all of those candidates. I think there's around 50 to 60 applicants that we had. The executive session that you were invited to this afternoon is a result of a meeting between the interim city administrator and the mayor and myself. On April 4th, we'll meet for this interim city administrator to share some ideas for the city with us that specifically relate to this opening, and we'll have a further discussion of the direction that we wanna take with this opening at that time. Do you wanna elaborate on that, or is that well-stated?
Well said.
Okay.
But the process is still going forward with the applicants being sent to assessment.
That's correct.
And we will have that before April 4th? So, we'll see those?
If we don't have the results prior to April, if we don't anticipate, let me phrase this a different way, and I don't know if I'm breaking protocol entirely here, but can we make it a request that the assessments are completed prior to April 4th?
Very good. There we go. Thank you. Not bad for a report that wasn't ready, but well-prepared. Thank you. Absolutely. Real property.
Real property. Real property committee meeting was held 9:00 AM Wednesday, March 6th. All members of the committee were present. And citizens comments, we had a few comments. Jim Ryan commented about the difficulty in finding the perfect consultant for the real estate at the Marina. Don't disagree, but nonetheless, we will move forward to try to get the best we can to have a consultant down there. I get to skip over completely the comments from the Marina tenants with one exception. I think it's worth commenting, we heard from Michael Fenn from Title Wave, but one thing they are doing is planning to do a standalone location for shuttle concierge service from the Marina to the front beach areas, in addition to the public transit service for food and beverage employees. So, you know, the idea of trying to reduce the parking situations down there continues to be a good idea. Brian Bergen, the Marina manager, asked in his Marina comments that we give consideration to, as we come towards the end of the bid process for the Morgan Creek Grill, that it's going to be fairly complicated, that 45 days might not be the appropriate amount of time to elicit and solicit responses, that we extend that time at the tail end of the process, so that people have, you know, time, whether it's partnerships or, you know, complex business dealings, to give them additional time. And it was thought a good idea in the committee to do that. In old business, we discussed, this is great, because everybody's already covered everything by the time I get here. Brian, I wanna thank you for the update on the removal and replacement of the underground stor-, I said Brian, I meant Ryan. Update on removal and replacement underground storage tanks. If anyone's been down there, they've seen what a mess it was, and I was just down there yesterday. Looks like we are really close. I think that's the technical term that Desiree used.
We are. In terms of, well, a change to the scope of that project has been requested by the Marina manager, and discussed with Donnie Pitts and myself, about moving the vent system that's adjacent to the fueling island pad, closer to the fuel island pad. It just creates for better movement of vehicles. We've discussed it with the engineer and with the contractor, and waiting to see whether or not it's feasible with the amount of contingency funds that we have on hand. We don't think that it's gonna be a major impact to the budget, but it is, it really benefits just the usability of the vehicles in that area.
Update on the Marina dock rehabilitation project. ATMs continuing their work on the permits and was scheduling the pre-application meeting with the permitting agencies. We had a discussion on the status of the list of certified arborists. The original idea was to try to have three arborists, and that's an arbitrary number, but three arborists that the city had confidence in, that would be the recommended arborist for any of the tree removals. There was some discussion about, you know, the legal ramifications of limiting the number of arborists that could, as opposed to just making recommendations. I think our conclusion, and we're still waiting on some answers back from the city, is at least have a list, but not to legislate, I see our attorney nodding her head, not legislate who citizens have to do business with in terms of an arborist. But I think we continue to see issues with trees that are of concern, and I think, you know, going forward, we'll continue to have this discussion about what kind of trees, what size of trees, and the impact it has on the overall drainage issues we face on the city. There was discussion of a moratorium on future lot subdivisions as it relates to stormwater management. Not that that has been an issue here. It was felt by city administration that that's a fairly extreme measure, to try to place a moratorium on subdivision. But instead, to look at, you know, ways to mitigate and work through subsequent meetings, the comments were made about 35% lot coverage, but for us to take a real look at what we're dealing with, it isn't just subdivision, it's all the underlying and root cause issues that are causing this, that frankly, we probably need to take up in the real property committee. Discussion of the tree ordinance. I had brought up, I think there was a time, and Douglas offered some good longstanding advice from a long time ago, why palm trees are not protected. You know, I think we all saw the 13 palm trees taken down on waterway, a bit horrified that these were large, pretty palm trees that were chopped to little pieces, because we don't have protection on palm trees. It was suggested, Douglas, feel free to speak up, that this goes way back to areas of front beach, and the fact that there was a time on this island when they were almost weeds, but we also didn't have the amount of development that we have right now. And there was discussion also, which council member Ward jumped in on, about pine trees, and pine trees being small root-based, lots of them on the island. Frankly, the discussion really was, should we be revisiting our tree ordinances in light of all the development, all the drainage issues that we have, and maybe rethink, you know, for the future, how we address these issues? And I offered personally, I think, some of these issues that you see on Forest Trail and all, where those lots are heavily, heavily pine-treed. I can imagine sitting across the street from them and saying, you're basically gonna remove the pine forest, because you can. I think those are the things we need to take up going forward.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
The pine drainage system is not smart. It goes straight down very deep. That's why during Hugo, going up between here and Palmville, we saw them all snapped off by the millions at 10 feet. That's why they're snapped off.
Coming from the person with the largest, tallest pine tree on the island.
I had nothing to do with it.
Little fertilizer and love pink hair. But thank you. Discussion of the city's allocation of green belt funds and allowable projects. We did ask, following the last council meeting, we asked of the administrator, you know, what could we use these funds for? It was offered that, you know, typically, the green belt funds were boardwalk, footpath, unpaved roads, unpaved, small parking areas, wetlands protection, parkland acquisition, and the city will continue to work on coming up with recommendations for where we could apply, so that we don't lose green belt funding, any of the available funds going forward. Discussion of the Marina leases as it relates to the overall vision of the Marina property. I think, you know, there, you know, this will always have multiple opinions on it, but, you know, with the referendum, you know, defeated two to one, the city owes responsibility for the care and maintenance of the real assets at the Marina regardless of the referendum. So, we're moving forward as quickly as we can to make sure that the docks are safe and the buildings are of a suitable structure. We did just have, as well, some forensic reports come back on the condition of Morgan Creek Grill, but I think overall, what we're trying to look at is, you know, what's the intention of the Marina as it relates to the future of the island? You know, how much of it is available for the residents? How much is available for commercial purpose? And, you know, trying to create something that the residents can look down there and be proud of, regardless of which direction the referendum went. And interim administrator Fregoso suggested that, you know, any of these future leases, you know, that we will be consistent if we have an intention to put them out for commercial use, to follow a proper bid process. With that, the meeting was concluded. There was no executive session. Next meeting date will be 9:00 AM Wednesday, April 3rd, in the conference room. Thank you.
Nice comments. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So, what is the timeline for the RFP for Morgan Creek Grill? I didn't really see that in the...
Yeah, there was in the package. So, we originally thought we'd be going out to bid in the August timeframe. Desiree, tell me if I'm off by a little bit. What we're looking at, Carol, is, is it possible, getting to August, to pull that in, to allow additional time at the end, you know, for, you know, what we would anticipate be some fairly complex responses, and a variety of responses? I don't know how much we can pull it in, but we're, you know, the good news is, we created a timeframe to at least try to keep us on track, but some of these steps, you know, such as the Hill report on Morgan Creek Grill and what we do about that, you know, you've done this, they're just time-bound.
We are keeping with the schedule that we have presented.
So far.
So far. The only change would be Brian's suggestion that we allot, give the potential respondents additional time to put a very comprehensive proposal together. So, we had initially estimated, what, 45 days, so we're thinking about extending that to about, you know, maybe 90 days.
Maybe 90 days. But the answer is to get it right. I mean, we don't wanna rush the process, we wanna get it right.
Any, yes, sir?
There was a reference to Hugo. Has anybody considered, staff working on acknowledging that this will be the 30th anniversary of Hugo?
That's a good idea.
And we could use that opportunity for education, how to deal with natural disasters, preparedness, safety, and recognizing that it was a huge event for this island. It had a big impact. Stories, pictures before and after, where we've come economically and otherwise. There's a lot to tell there. I think we'll find other areas, and the media may be doing some things, and perhaps that's worthy of consideration.
Good idea.
Comment. Anyone else? Hearing none, moving on. Reports from city officers, boards, and commissions. Commissions Tax Advisory Committee, no meeting in March. Board of Zoning Appeals, no meeting in March. Planning Commission, your minutes are attached. Reports from special district committees, none. Petitions received, referred, disposed, none. Bill's already in possession. This is a big one for us. Second reading of ordinance, 201904, an ordinance amending Title III Public Works of the City of Isle of Palms Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, single-use plastic bags.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second. We have the reading. I'd like to make an amendment. And as per council members Rice talking about consistency, I would like to see Isle of Palms add into that ordinance, that we prohibit plastic bags, styrofoam, and all the same exact items from our beach, to be like with Sullivan's Island and with Folly Beach. That is a motion.
Well, it's a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Can you just expound some of them?
Okay, well...
Just not already...
All single-use carryout plastic bags, plastic straws, pyroestu, plastic foam products such as, but not limited to, cups, bowls, plates, trays, clamshell containers, meat trays, egg cartons, coolers, ice chests are expressly prohibited from the use on the beach or any other town-owned properties.
So, the rec center and...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank the mayor for speaking on our behalf in Columbia this past week, and doing an excellent job in making sure our state lawmakers know the importance of home rule in these kinds of matters. Otherwise, I will have to say that initially, we have had some small conversations about something like this in the past. I had some reservations about expanding restrictions to the beach, because I had some questions about enforcement, and whether that was doable. But after hearing from conservationists, from our interim administrator, from the mayor, and council members on Sullivan's and Folly, I believe this is the right thing to do. It's about sending a message that this is important to our community, and doing, you know, making sure people understand the problems that we're having with pollution. And it is, it's significant. We've talked today about the amount of trash that the Isle of Palms cleanup crew picked up. That is just a small fraction of what is out there. We were out there once a week. Every time we came back, that supply was replenished of trash, and you know that every time the tide comes in and out, that's getting swept back out to sea. So, really, this is about messaging, and also the fact that our other beach communities are doing it. If we're all doing the same thing, that message becomes stronger.
Any other comments?
Yep.
Yes?
I always like to complicate things. So, if it's about messaging, I think we all acknowledge enforcement's very difficult. If it's about messaging, why would we not address cigarettes at the same time? I'm not saying you prohibit smoking on the beach, but it's a message. To Councilman Kinghorn's comments, you know, if you brought it here, take it home with you. Do we wanna be leaders, or we wanna wait for somebody else to do that? And I'm not gonna make an amendment at this time, but I think, I would ask that, you know, those that have worked much more diligently on this than myself, consider that, let's be consistent in what we do. It's okay to throw your cigarettes on the beach, but by the way, bring your plastic home with you. Wouldn't we've seen the statistics that we saw today? So, just a thought.
It's a great thought.
Well, you either got to ban smoking on the beach, or you already have a litter law in place. It's against the law to leave a cigarette on the beach.
It's against the law on litter on the beach.
Yeah, any kind of litter, right.
So, the second, and not offer an amendment, but as we discussed earlier, we've got to have a robust education program.
That's right.
And especially if we haven't done it in the past, this notion of pack in and pack out has got to be emphasized. We can't emphasize it enough.
Yeah. Reached out to the Post and Courier, to the Moulton News, to the Island Line News, asking them all, and they have been running these articles, which is great. Any other comments on the amendment? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I think it's great. I think it's good that, you know, we're not being timid. We can stand up, and, I mean, I kinda wish I had wanted to go further with the lids and the condom packets, and, but, you know, we've got to continue to push the envelope, be the leaders, and in public works, we'll talk about the cigarette...
Thank you.
...issue in our next meeting.
I've had to finger from interim city administrator Fregoso. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so just for discussion purposes, as you all debate and talk about the amendment that has been proposed, the existing ordinance only addresses penalties for not complying with what's existing in the ordinance as proposed, which includes the regulation and provision of the distribution of these items at point of sale. Should city council decide to expand that provision, and also prohibit the use of these items on the beach, it has to be accompanied by a penalty. Sullivan's Islands included a $100 penalty for each offense, should people bring and violate this new provision as amended. Otherwise, it would, the same regulation would apply, which would be a first warning. The first penalty would be $100 citation, $200 for the second violation in 12 months, and then $500 for each additional violation. And that is just simply not applicable to apply to somebody on the beach using some of these items. Therefore, I think that the way that Sullivan's Island approached it, having a separate penalty for that type of violation, would be appropriate.
I totally agree. So, do I need to...
I'd like to make an amendment to add...
The penalty.
A penalty of...
--a penalty of $100 for infraction.
I will second.
Okay, so that's a amendment.
Two amendments.
Okay.
Perfect. Second amendment first.
Second.
Two amendments.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, this is different.
This is a different ordinance?
Is this a different ordinance?
Yeah.
Because this is business, the ones we've got in front of us is business.
Keep us legal, please.
It's for business.
We can't right now.
Yeah, the way the ordinance is written, penalties and fines are just against the business that sells these things to a customer at the point of sale. So, shifting it to enforcement on the beach of people who bought things and are using them on the beach, it's a different ordinance.
It's oranges and apples. Maybe we just need to--
I probably should remove my second.
I believe Sullivan's has us all linked together, but I'm not--
Well, this is--
Yeah, I was just reading Sullivan's Island.
Well, like I said, this is the first I've heard of it, so it's like, obviously, there's some stuff to be worked out. I'd like, I was, I'd rather go through and pass the motion as it was written tonight. Other than that, I'd have a difficult time doing it, just because it's kind of blurred lines.
Did you, on the--
I removed my second.
Okay, so, but on the second amendment, which I made, as for bringing stuff to the beach, as for Sullivan's Island, Folly Beach, I would like a vote for that.
But that's individuals.
You can't do that.
That's not businesses.
The recommendation is that it should be a separate--
A separate ordinance.
It's a separate--
Okay. We'll do that next week.
Yes.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And Ryan's right, it was the original motion.
Okay. So, back to the original motion of plastics.
Correct. And this, if I may comment on this, and there's some good discussion, but some of the things that were brought up, I meant, we are basically penalizing people for leaving certain things and not penalizing people for leaving other things. While we do have a stringent litter law, enforcement always comes down to it. You have to be a witness of littering, no matter whether it's on the beach or in the right-of-way or anywhere. It's illegal. We already have laws for that. With the cups and the bags and everything, that's all low-hanging fruit. You know, if you're really concerned, you want to, you know, the biggest item is your cigarette butts, and it's the third rail, you know? And I can understand how it would be difficult to manage, but I'm not saying I'm in favor of, you know, outlawing it, but truly, that's the source, so.
Okay, just go back to our original motion for expanding the plastic bag prohibition to include other plastic products and styrofoam. Yes, sir.
One last comment from me, chiming in and piggybacking on council member Buchanan's comments. I think council member Rice has already said that she plans to take the smoking back to Public Works. I'd like for the beachgoer component of the ordinance, or a new ordinance to address beachgoers. As for Sullivan's, I would request that you do that as well, at the same, and smoking and all in one--
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Can you just solve the world?
Okay. No.
I'm on it.
All those in favor of ordinance 2019-04, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Unanimous? Nino?
Let it be clear that we're trying to put beach Santa out of business.
Ordinance is for first reading. Ordinance 2915, changes to the short-term rental permit fees. Increase the base fee to 350 from 175 for the first $2,000 revenues, and incremental of 460 for each $1,000 or a fraction thereafter, which was from 230. Do I hear a motion? So moved. This is ordinance number 2915 for short-term rental licenses.
Twenty nineteen--
So moved, Jimmy.
We have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion.
Well, we don't do discussion on--
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Actually-- Can I, what, why do we not do discussion on first reading? You're not, it's illegal. Is it illegal?
No.
Is it just--
It's illegal.
You won't get cooking.
Yeah.
You go to jail.
You all make a motion for discussion, not a motion for discussion.
Correct.
You have to move to discuss.
Yes.
Your agenda says, your agenda says by title only.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify protocol.
It's protocol. By title only.
I just want to discuss the discussion.
Ordinance 2019-06.
No, we didn't vote.
Yeah, you need a motion to approve--
I made a motion, had a second.
Oh, we need to vote.
Do we, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Nay. Seven-two, all right. Ordinance 2916-06, changes to the NPDES stormwater management fee from $48 to $72. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
And to the record, it's 2019-06.
Discussion.
There is no discussion.
All right.
We're trying to let these poor--
All those favor, say aye. Aye. Nays?
No.
Ordinance 2019-07.
Aye.
Pardon me.
No, pardon me.
Trying to get the notes right.
I'll slow down.
But you're fine.
If you all could raise your hand, that's useful, that helps Marine on time.
The two nays were Carol and I on the last one.
No, that was on the first one.
Rentals.
Desiree's sketchy.
I'm gonna listen to Desiree and nobody else. Everyone, we're ready for the--
I'm good, I'm sorry.
All right. Ordinance 2019-07, amendments to the minimum requirements for a lot to be allowed to be subdivided. Increases the minimum lot size from 17,500 to 35,000 feet for continuous high land in the SR1 Single Family Residential District from 8,000 to 16,000 in SR2 District. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Can I move for discussion on this to have Douglas give us any?
You know, it's not a problem with that, but it's by title only, and we've always done it, discussed it on second reading.
Okay.
So, what will happen, these ordinances will go back to the committee for discussion before they come before you all for second reading.
Right.
Okay.
So, all of them's favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right. Resolutions to defer action on the next two items, and these are things that have to do with increases. Resolution 2019-01, change for the Comcast franchise fee from 3% to 5% the maximum allowed. Because this is a change in fees, we have to have a public hearing. So, again, all this is, we've got to have a public hearing.
Correct. We're presenting it to city council, but we are asking to defer taking action until we have public hearing in April.
And one more, just like that. Resolution 2019-02, increase in standardized building permit fees to $50 base building plus $5 per thousand of project value thereafter. Again, go back to the public hearing.
No action is required.
No action. Okay. Ms. Selena's business. Proclamation naming April is--
Sarcodosis.
Thank you.
No, oh, come on. I want to hear the mayor say this.
Sarcodosis awareness. There really is a harbor.
It is.
And I did Google it just to make sure. Whereas sarcoidosis is a potentially debilitating and deadly multi-organ inflammatory disease estimated to affect 200,000 people in the United States with no known cause, cure, reliable treatment to slow or halt the progression of chronic cases. Whereas, the signs and symptoms of sarcoidosis vary widely depending on the person and organs affected, and can include debilitating fatigue, shortness of breath, difficulties with balance and coordination, irregular heartbeat, visual problems including blindness, pain affecting joints, muscles, weakness, and numbness of limbs, skin rashes, discolorations, mood disorders such as depression and anxiety, organ failure, and sleep difficulties. Whereas, sarcoidosis can affect people of any age, race, or gender, but is common among adults between the ages of 20 and 40, and 3.8-fold higher in African-Americans than in whites. Whereas, sarcoidosis is a diagnosis of exclusion as there is no objective test or biomarker, numerous tests, and ongoing clinical observations, and/or management lends to high economic burden of this disease, including great cost to the patients and family members. Whereas, volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life and prognosis of persons living with sarcoidosis and their families, and more research is needed to find more effective treatments and improved care for those living with the disease today. Now, therefore, I, Jimmy Carroll, do hereby proclaim April is sarcoidosis awareness month. In witness of, I have hair unto set my hand and caused the great seal of the City of Isle Palms to be a fix.